I'd like to call the Greenwich Village Board Committee, the whole meeting for August 27th, 2018 to order. Roll call please, Andy.
Hood.
Here.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Jacobs. Ross.
Here.
Garner. Ballmas.
Present.
Two absent, four present.
So Mayor Kavarg is not able to join us tonight, so it would be appropriate this time to have a motion for President Protem to serve in her absence.
So move Jeanie Ballmas.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hood, second by Trustee Ross. For Trustee Ballmas to serve in that role. Roll call please, Andy.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Ballmas?
Sure.
I guess.
Oh, sure!
Alrighty.
Alright then.
There's more of them than there are of us.
They're gonna take us out!
And one of them has guns, so we're in trouble. Yes, at least one has a gun, so yeah.
Alright then.
Sure. So, tonight is our strategic plan progress report number five. So, twice a year, we report on the progress of the strategic plan. One's including the budget process, the other one takes place in August where we do a standalone. So, the goal is just to make sure that we keep it out in front of the village board, keep it fresh in the minds of the department heads, and make sure we're making progress on these initiatives that were set. And then we also post it on the website, which Jack's already done, email it to those that participated in the focus groups, and then highlight it on social media. Just a reminder of kinda how it's set up, so there's a project lead for each initiative, and they complete a one-page update of how they're doing on the action steps that were set. So, and then we have a little bar chart at the top that kinda shows how far along we think we are for each initiative, and then graphically assign whether an action step was completed, progress made, or no progress to date, to try to keep it simple as you take a quick glance at it. So tonight, we're gonna walk through each of them. Some of them have completed, a couple more since the last time we met, so these progress report meetings are gonna be getting shorter and shorter as they're completed. But we've got the project leads down here, so they're gonna play hot potato with the microphone and pass it back and forth and give you an update. And if there's questions as we go along, just chime in. So, we'll kick it off with Jack.
Alright, thank you, Pat. Thank you, Village Board. So the first item that we had was to improve communication opportunities with stakeholders. So this one was completed in February of this year, based on our goals we set out. But as is apparent, this is something that's always ongoing. So we continue to make strides. Our village Facebook page, we're up over 4,000 likes. Our Nextdoor reaches 6.6,000 households around Nextdoor. So those are our two biggest communication sources. We use them for really good two-way communication, to try to really get connected with residents. We continue to develop our website to make it better, improving our website comment process. And then right now, one of the new things is we're working towards getting our site secured. So when you go up on top in a Google Chrome, it'll show that it's a secured site. We don't accept payments to our site, so it's not essential, but it'll help our SEO, and it'll also help people feel confident that they're dealing with a legitimate business. So that process should be completed in the next couple of months.
Alright, so... For our second objective is continuing our workforce succession plan and diversity initiatives. So we, a couple of years ago, we went through the process, the board and staff, on developing a workforce planning model. So our action steps one through three were completed. Action steps four through six are going to really never be complete. Those are always going to be a continuous in-progress status, just to keep things fresh and going. But every year, we do go through a process of reviewing our workforce statistics to continue to develop, or to continue to monitor and develop projections on anticipated retirements and other staffing vacancies, and then to focus on ways to fill those vacancies, whether that be through traditional methods or alternative methods. For action item number four, our recruitment plan, the focus has shifted a little bit away from like one overall recruitment plan for all jobs in the village, and instead kinda focusing by department or specific job type, like sworn police or sworn fire. One recent example in working with the police department was to kinda anticipate utilizing the Police Explorer program to fill some of our newly-created part-time CSO positions. So we currently have two former Police Explorers working as part-time CSOs. We anticipate a third coming on very shortly. And then as of Friday, we had the nice distinction to have our very first Police Explorer that became a part-time CSO, migrated to a full-time CSO position, and now is a full-time police officer with us. So he started at the Police Academy today. So, you know, when the Police Explorer program was developed back in 2014, this was kinda the end goal, was to be able to have a group of potential employees with an interest in law enforcement that were screened, and you know, had the right mindset to go forward in this career. So we finally saw that come to fruition. So hopefully, that will continue in years to come. To item number five, or action step number five, implementation. We are continually challenged by the types and timing of our vacancies. So obviously, it's the public sector. We have a lot of unique jobs that you won't find in the common marketplace, and sometimes our vacancies are unexpected. And so that makes it difficult to recruit, or develop a recruitment strategy where you don't know when, or you know, when those vacancies may occur. But nonetheless, you know, we do try to come up with ways to do that. A lot of our jobs are not prominent in today's hiring market, so again, that makes it difficult to traditionally recruit for the types of jobs that we currently have. So we recognize as staff that traditional methods of recruitment will not always generate the necessary candidates. So we've looked to alternative methods to fill some of our vacancies, whether that be an interim or a long-term basis. And then, like, as a recent example, in our community development department, we had our chief plan reviewer. He retired after a very long, you know, nice employment here with the village, but that's a unique job. And so we know in the labor market, we're probably not gonna find a wealth of candidates with that background. So we took the opportunity to kinda step back, fill that vacancy through a contract employee, and in the meantime, take a look at our operational needs, take a look at our staffing, decide if we wanna recruit for that position, and if so, what kinds of skills and abilities we need for the future going forward. So that's, you know, another way that we're kind of tweaking our implementation plan. And even just finding replacements reflects the changing nature of our work and operational demands. In some cases, we've developed new positions that we have not previously recruited for in departments that wouldn't traditionally have that type of position, or we've turned to more specialized positions. One example was the hiring of our management analyst in the fire department in lieu of a traditional deputy chief position. With the management analyst position, it has a broader organizational focus and can deal with more of the management-specific projects that are needed in the department versus focusing solely on a shift management level that would be in a traditional deputy chief role. So a second example was also retaining a retired police officer to become our public safety or public education specialist in the schools, instead of committing a full-time police officer to that role. So we've tried to kinda reutilize and think out of the box when it comes to filling some of our vacancies, to make sure that we get, you know, more up-to-date candidate knowledge, skills, experience to be competitive and attractive to those employees. We've also been increasing our bilingual recruitment. So our most frequently cited language need is Spanish, and either through contract relationships and filling some of our vacancies, or direct hiring of employees with bilingual skills, we're improving the accessibility of bilingual assistance to our village residents and visitors to town. So currently, in the police department, we have a vacancy in a records division, so that was one skill that we felt was very important when dealing with the public as well. So we are focusing on that side of the recruitment. So, overall, we continue to make small but steady gains in our workforce diversity each year. And in addition of some of the contractual positions, also in our administrative support roles, has helped increase diversity in our customer service positions. And then finally, on action step number six, our modify, evaluate, revise, you know, we continue to face shifting cultural and business environments. Traditional jobs are a challenge in today's business climate when you see increasing amounts of contract workers, whether that be through traditional staffing firms placing contract workers, the advent of the gig worker phenomenon, or even freelance people going out and just kind of deciding when, where, and what work they wanna do on their own. So millennials embrace this concept of changing jobs and being freelance and mobile employees. So requiring an eight-to-five, Monday through Friday, work schedule or other typical 40-hour week jobs is more challenging to the current millennial workforce. But we continue to seek different ways of responding to our operational needs. Contract workers, and you know, we're working on developing a remote working relationship with one of our summer interns who has returned to college, so that he can continue to provide some ongoing economic development support remotely from his college dorm while, you know, he's there. So we're kind of getting into that alternate, you know, concepts of filling those job needs. But again, you know, not every job can be non-traditional. We still need our police, we still need our fire. And so that brings us to focusing more on a communication strategy to kinda beef up our recruitment message and improve our social media presence. So some of this can be accomplished by using our current social media more effectively. The village has a Facebook page, the police department has a Facebook page, and hopefully in the near future, the fire department will have a Facebook page as well. So, you know, using that to spread our message about the benefits of working here when job opportunities are available, so we're hoping that we can kind of create that brand through some of our different social media platforms. And then finally, we'll be focusing, I'll continue to focus on online applications, which is a big thing with the mobile world of today. So when those are appropriate, we'll continue to push that out, and then also look to other job posting sites, like a ZipRecruiter or a Career Builder, to kinda push us out a little bit deeper into the job market. So, lots of things going on.
Hi, thank you.
Can I ask a question, or just a real small question? How did the initial Junior Police Academy go? Was that over winter?
It was over the summer.
Oh, over summer?
It went really well. We had a great response to it, and by all evidence, the kids had a great time. The officers are very engaged. We're looking forward to making that an annual recurrence.
That's excellent. I just think your Police Explorer program overall is fantastic, so I was hoping that you had some good success in the junior.
That's a direct result of Officer Martin in that role. She took the lead on that, put together the curriculum, and brought it all together. So she's already making her mark, but it was a great program. Thank you for asking that.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. So for 1.3, what we're looking at doing is reforming our performance measures to improve our village services. So the first step of this process was to basically develop what we're doing right now. So essentially, what we looked at is we were trying to really see how we can get this plan into action items, and then also get it something that we can report back on and complete. So that started the first couple processes of it, but we wanna take it a step further. So this plan is kinda still very high-level, but we wanted to look also at real process improvement and benchmarking. So we started looking at this one. It did kind of take a little bit of a backburner to some of the other items, but we're really approaching it right now. And so what part of my research has been is to find out what are other communities doing, and how can we benchmark ourselves, not just against ourself the previous year, so not just, "This is what we did last year. We did this many permits, we did this many violations," but also compared to other municipalities like us. And so one of the best free sources out there is ICMA, the International City Managers Association. They have an open access benchmarking platform where communities from around the country take place in 80 different categories and report back on their progress, and you can compare to another municipality that may be in another state, but might be very similar in size and tourism, and also, you know, have a Six Flags, for example. So it really gives us a good opportunity. So what we're doing right now is I'm going through, I'm kind of identifying the different measures that fit for us. So there's 80 of them in total. A good percentage of them will not apply to us. It's parks questions, it's library questions, but a lot of them will. So what we're doing right now is kinda identifying what the process will be to complete it, and then also not just to complete it once, but to keep completing it every year. Because a lot of municipalities participate once or twice, and then they kinda fall off. But we're looking at kind of how we can get this into an annual process. So working on that, I'll be meeting with the department head soon to kinda start talking about what our plan is and how to roll something like this out. Alright. For the next one too, for the business process improvements village-wide. So, we started this back in 2016, starting to look at different items that we could improve on, looking at the process of what we were doing, and whether it was improving from a cost perspective, or just making things more efficient internally. We had a couple items, we started at the beginning, customer service, building maintenance, and paper printed forms procurement. About a year into that process, from one of the completed groups was the paper group, we're starting to kinda look in this fall, kind of at what the success has been, how it's being used throughout departments. We are finding that departments are utilizing a lot of the processes that were recommended, the online purchasing, and then also a way that Village Hall's been purchasing paper different from the past. So we're kind of analyzing that, and then also looking at our CRM and FOIA software. That right now, we're currently waiting on technical review, but once that's completed, we'll be ready to send that out and have an RFP released, and start getting firms in to start interviewing them. Another one that we're doing right now is the finance division's looking at a couple items for their accounts payable process. So I don't know if, Brian, you wanna give an update on that one?
Yeah. Thanks, Jack. So one of the things I thought would be, this would be a good time to do, is review kind of our purchasing process from start to finish, you know, from department heads in need all the way through board approval. I think it's really timely, given the purchasing policy updates, the new software, there's been some staff turnover, and I think it would be good to, you know, not only use this as a way to look for efficiencies in that process, but also kinda get in there and retrain employees, train new employees, make sure everybody's following the purchasing policy, which I'm sure they are. But I think that would be, this would be a good time to do that, especially with the new software. So it's one of the things we're gonna look at.
Jack?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question? You said CRM?
Yes.
That means one thing to me. I don't know if it's the same for here. What is that?
Sure, yeah, for a customer relationship management.
Okay, good.
Yep, so kinda looking at how we handle workflow of anything from website comments to service requests. So like, for example, the Public Works Department, they currently have a service request system in place. But throughout the village, we have different requests, different questions. So what we're looking at is the software, well, originally, we looked at the whole process. And I mean, the software was kind of the obvious choice, but it was what the group recommended to improve. But essentially, what it would do is, let's say, a resident could log in onto their portal, and they could report anything from a broken, a streetlight out, to, you know, an issue that they have. And then what they can do is they can see their history, we can see their history from previous requests, and they can see a resolution. So they can kinda follow and see that, you know, what they reported got finished. So what we're doing currently is we handle it on an email basis for a lot of these, or through calls. But what we're really trying to do is get a system where they can kind of, we can track it, and we can measure, and we can see what's out there open still. So from a village-wide, not just from one department doing separate things, try to get it all tied in together. So we're looking forward to, I think it'll be a big improvement for a lot of our service requests, so.
Can I ask, so you're saying that if somebody calls in with a complaint to Public Works, and then another time they complain to the police department, and then another time it's a call to the fire department, it would all be listed there as the same person calling?
It could be potentially, if we utilized it that way. So that would be a very robust system, if we did it from all call data. But if nothing else, we could use it especially for written communication. So if a request came in from a website comment or another source, we could do it. But there is potential for that, and that's how a lot of private sector firms handle, you know, those type of inquiries are, through a CRM system. So that's all potential.
So, right now, what's your plan?
The plan right now, so we have the, we're looking at, we have the RFP ready to go. So we're looking at, I don't know what the technical capabilities of that will be. Again, a full system that could have every call, I mean, I know that we'd have to separate out 911. Again, a lot of the different departments are utilizing services like that, but from a general village calls, we could, that's the plan. So for any inquiry that we get at Village Hall, would get logged through it. Public Works could also log it through their current service request system. So, that's what we're looking at. But to how, the extent of it, that'll be kind of part of that technical review next step.
Okay, sorry, one more on top of this then. So, you know, I'm familiar with like Salesforce is a very common CRM platform that's very expensive, so I was just wondering, have you done any, been able to do any benchmarking with any other municipality, to find out if there's a cheaper tool that might work for us?
It's considerably cheaper what we're looking at. So, and it is a lot, to be honest, it's less robust. So, I mean, what I'm really seeing it for is for website comments and FOIA requests, stuff that is a process that needs workflow. So essentially, someone gets it, it needs to get assigned, it needs a resolution, and then a closure. So that works really well for some of our, like, Public Works is a perfect example. That's a lot of what they do in calls, is, you know, something's broken, it's either ours or it's not ours, and then, you know, they do the work order and then they complete it. And then it's that next step also of letting the resident know it's completed. So from a price perspective, what we looked at, probably about the initial installation's 12,000, and annual subscription's about five. So that's, you know, we think from staff time and the current process, and also just good customer service, we think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Yeah, I mean, Grey's Lake has a CRM setup that's pretty simple, as far as submitting something on the website, and then they can see, you know, it was assigned to Public Works, you know, the department responded such-and-such time, and it was closed out. Right now, someone sends in, you know, an email request, if it goes to Public Works and they set up a service request in their CityWorks software, but other departments don't have that, and there's no, I mean, Jack will respond back, or someone from Public Works said, "Yep, we got it, and we'll put it on the list." But usually, it's really never closed the loop formally. You know, they go out and take care of the work, but it does not follow up with the resident, where they can see in the process. So it'll be starting out pretty simple, I think, like that, but just so the residents can see, "Yeah, they got it, it's been assigned, it's working its way through the process, so they're not hanging out there," so.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next item is to update the fire department's reporting and record-keeping software and systems. We've been in front of you the last three to six months, brought the image trend in front of you for approval. We've looked at the ambulance billing, you approved that. Brian brought last week the collection agency, ready to go in the background. We've been working with IS. All of our ambulances are now hotspots. I didn't even know what that meant about six months ago, but we can walk around on mobile Wi-Fi, and our iPads will work when we're standing inside or outside the vehicles. We've been doing tons of testing, both between our vendors and us, making sure the information's flowing both ways, as well as making sure all the guys are getting used to entering these. We're a little concerned about how long it's gonna take initially to put the patient reports in on a computer, they're so used to using paper and pencil. That's why we held off to the September 1st. Kids are back in school, Great America slowed down. There is a little window here where we're a little slower prior to the holidays, so we felt like it was a perfect time to go live, with the exception that September 1st is a three-day holiday weekend. So, that kinda played out, but we feel pretty good about it. All good projects happen over a good, long weekend, so we're looking forward to that. So at this point, we're ready to go live. I believe next time we're in front of you, this one will get stamped green, and I'll be able to pass the mic a little quicker, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. The initiative behind these action steps is, I thought, was kind of worth restating. It's to execute a plan that connects existing businesses to the village, encourages them to expand, attracts new and fills vacant spaces. It's pretty simple and succinct, and it says, you know, it's the whole of what, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here, so I thought it was worth sharing with you one more time. So as you know, and you've heard me many times say before, we dissect our data by sector. We talk in terms of retail, manufacturing, and office. Retail and manufacturing traditionally are strongest sectors, that continues to be the case. Retail provides, and tourism, I'm putting this together, provides our sales tax revenue. Manufacturing is where the good jobs are coming from, so we really, those are our areas of strength, and they also happen to be areas that are very beneficial to our community from two different perspectives. So office, the vacancy, so vacancy rates, the good news here is that vacancy rates in both retail and industrial manufacturing are down from a year ago, which means space has been absorbed. They're also significantly lower than Lake County as a whole. So that puts us in a strong position relative to our competitive communities. In office, we are still lower than Lake County, but not by as much, and it's about three times what our other sectors are doing. So whereas retail is in the 3% vacancy range, our manufacturing or industrial is at about six, no, sorry, it's down to four, it's in the fours, 4.1. It was at six and a half a year ago. And then office is up in the 14 range, so significant difference. So with those numbers, you know, I think our emphases are correctly placed where we've had them, which is in fostering retail and tourism and advanced manufacturing, for all of the good things that they bring to the community. And certainly, Tri-State Business Park has been one area of significant investment. It's been a pretty exciting year. Some of our, to that goal of existing businesses expanding, Wyman and Tablecraft and Nipro, that you're very familiar with, have all added significantly to their operations in recent months, up to a year ago. Alec is under, you know, under construction, moving pretty quickly toward resolution in about a year. And of course, we have plans from Center Point for a new spec building, which is always an indicator of a strong market. So those are all very strong indicators of success in industrial. And of course, you know about our new retail and tourism plans that had to do with sports tourism, so I won't talk about that, but it's certainly continuing to fuel that other sector. So the most common comment I hear from our large employers is that labor is their most common challenge right now, their toughest challenge. Playing into the availability of labor is how to get people to your location, so that really fuels our work with PACE, is trying to provide a way to get those folks to our employers. So in the short term, our goals with them have been all about shelter, you know, new shelter installation, maintenance, better maintenance of those shelters, so that we can relieve some of the impact on our Public Works crews. Long-term, the goals are really to optimize the signals along, well, the signals are optimized on Grand Avenue in Washington, but the buses aren't quite ready to receive those, so that we can create a more efficient, you know, overriding of the signals long-term. We've, the mayor has expressed that goal to PACE, and it's something that they're aware of, it's just not quite there yet. Back to the shelters, I think one of the biggest success stories of the last, you know, year and a half, close to two, was the completion of Route 21. Three things. It was, you know, it was adding the bus service to the Six Flags employee entrance, it was the sidewalk of the village laid, and the concrete pad that then has a shelter placed on it by PACE at the northwest corner there of Washington and Milwaukee. So what a difference from a couple of years ago, when we had, you know, associates that were walking, and maybe some unsafe conditions. So, you know, kudos to the village for putting all that together, I think, in my opinion. So the filling of the vacancies, of course, is a major part of this initiative, and that comes in two forms. One is filling existing vacancies, and for that, we use CoStar, which is a subscription service that brokers use. So it's primarily beneficial in that we can see trends and analyze things like vacancy rates, or if there's a small business that doesn't really use a broker, we can fill that gap. It's also great for listing our property owners' listings when they aren't using a broker, so it helps us fulfill a role that they might not have otherwise. And lastly, of course, ICSC, the International Council of Shopping Centers, has four big events each year that we continue to be very involved in. That's the best way to stay attuned to the retail and entertainment market. That's the Vegas trip that I come to every year for, and it was, it's always very beneficial. Chicago's coming up in the fall, and there are two in between, both in Chicago. And so this is something that we will continue to do, and with that, I will pass it on to Brian.
Alright, so one of the, one of the goals for finance was update the financial policies. We actually just passed this last meeting, so, you know, that is complete from that standpoint. I think we had 11 or so policies, and we changed about half of them. I think the biggest accomplishment out of that was getting it all in a consistent format, which makes it much easier to review. So as I said last week, I anticipate many more changes to come here fairly quickly, because it's easier to review, so. But for now, that one is complete. The multi-year financial plan, essentially, we had already in progress when we had done the strategic plan, but we wanted to add to that the financial, the fiscal contingency plan, which was a plan that the departments would submit items at every budget cycle, you know, items that, actions we could take in the event of kind of a fiscal emergency, so to speak. We did update those this last budget cycle, and we'll continue to do so, but we haven't had to use the plan yet, thankfully, but if we ever had to, we have some items- The multi-year financial plan, essentially, we had already in progress when we had done the strategic plan, but we wanted to add to that the financial, the fiscal contingency plan, which was a plan that the departments would submit items at, at every budget cycle, you know, items that, actions we could take in the event of kind of a fiscal emergency, so to speak. We did update those this last budget cycle, and we'll continue to do so, but we haven't had to use the plan yet, thankfully, but if we ever had to, we have some items that we can, we can look to, look to right away, so. I think with the financial forecast, we've been presenting the, the multi-year financial forecast and the multi-year capital plan in two separate meetings. I think at this point, we could probably get to a point where we can combine those into one. I know everybody's, everybody's disappointed, but I don't think it makes much sense to keep going over the, the assumptions for the forecast every year, you know, I think we've, we've done that, we've done that a couple of times now, so I think we'll combine those into one meeting, probably in December or so. And then finally, conservatively fund pension liabilities. This is more of an ongoing, although we have it marked complete with the drafting of a funding policy is the first step, and then also a change in the village's actuary, which gave us much more insight into how those things are calculated, as well as much more control over, you know, how those things each year could change, and how, what input we have from that standpoint. So actually just finished, or in draft form, is the one that will impact the fiscal year 20 budget, so we'll have that presentation here probably October-ish. Similar to what we did last year, actuary came in and did a brief presentation, but I think we'll do that again this year, and we should stay fairly steady from the way these, it's laid out with our, with our pension funding, so.
I have a question. With what the state's doing and some of the things that they've been talking, will that affect our pensions at all?
Unless they, there, there's some change in how we are allowed to invest, how the pension funds are allowed to invest the pension money, you know, the actual funds that are in there, which is really all the state has control over, other than the benefit side, hopefully not.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I can't obviously say definitively, who knows what they'll do, but that has been one of the, one of the places where they've been extremely reluctant to, I guess, be more conservative. If anything, there's been, been additional, additional benefits that they've, that they've considered and approved, so.
When you say state, it is scary.
It is.
Am I not supposed to say those things out loud?
No, it's, it's a situation where you watch the paper every day to see what, to see what challenge we're going to have next, so. Will definitely, something we follow closely.
This initiative, I think you're very familiar with, and I appreciate that, that you've been very supportive of a number of things that we've brought to your attention and opportunities. Again, I'd like to take a step back and just restate some of the, it's a lofty goal to redevelop these grants, so we broke it down into pieces, which I do believe are manageable, although they're not, they're not immediate, but they are manageable. Vibrant mix of businesses that is reflective of the, of the market in that part of town that are appropriate to the market. Collaboration among business owners, which I think we're starting to see in our, in our committee. Investment by property owners in their own properties, both from a maintenance perspective, and code enforcement has been doing a great job of following up on a lot of the nuisance issues. And then, of course, bigger investment, facade and signage, things like that, down the road. Decreased vacancy rate, redevelopment of any obsolete structures, or some obsolete structures. Increased patronage to this side of town by other residents of Gurnee, which I think has certainly been a challenge with the traffic situation, but we are promoting it and, and with some, and, you know, reasonable amount of time, it will be vastly, vastly improved. And ease of navigating the corridor, again, that issue comes into play, but I think the, the actual, the impetus behind that particular goal was really down the road as properties redeveloped to connect driveways. That hasn't obviously happened yet, but we hope that it will in the, in the somewhat distant future. So the, I think you're pretty familiar with some of the, the success stories here, the, but I will just highlight the ones that I think reflect what we were trying to accomplish. We've got a lot more to go, but, but this, this sort of, you know, sums up the last year or so in my book, and maybe Trusty Thorsonson can, can join me if you think of anything else you'd like to talk about. But we have experienced a nice degree of success, that, that collaboration piece with the business owners. We, it's, we, we don't have a large group, but we do have a pretty dedicated group that meets on a regular basis, and our goal is certainly to increase that participation. I think I probably said that to you back in February, and it's then, true then, it's true now, but we'll, we'll keep trying. It's, it's hard when there's small businesses, they're running a business, and it's just, it's hard to find time to attend any meeting. So we, we continue to try to find ways. We started a Facebook page around the time of the early spring when we were trying to promote the farmer's market, thinking that maybe they would join a Facebook group and not actually attend a physical meeting. Didn't work. We'll keep trying, new, new ideas. So some of the highlights, the U-Haul recently closed on the purchase of the two vacant motel properties. That happened about a month ago now, and that, that's a win. They had someone on site this week, or have someone coming on site this week to evaluate the condition of the building, and I, we certainly don't have a timetable yet for plans, but I trust that that will be coming, and we'll keep on top of that issue. But they're, but the, but the transaction's closed, so that's done. Significant expansion of Habitat Restore, one of, really kind of a hidden gem, I think, on the corridor. They're a regional business, they're the only one in Lake County, they draw people from all over the county and beyond, so it brings traffic to the corridor, and they've, they've just embarked on a significant expansion, which more, about doubles their space, so that's nice to see. And then, and what that also does is trigger then that landlord to be able to make down the road some facade and signage improvements that probably wouldn't have been possible otherwise. So it's a domino effect. The formation of the committee, as I mentioned, the landscaping that you have approved and continue to support, which I think is much, from the comments I hear, much appreciated by the property owners who are on the receiving end of that, and also by residents in the area. And then, of course, the farmer's market, and I thank you for all of you who've come out to sample it. Attendance was really strong in July, off a little bit for August. I'm holding my breath and hoping that September and October are strong as we get back into the swing of things. But the really gratifying part of that, and I hope that you've heard some of the same comments, but I had a couple people talk to me at Gurnee Days, and then again at the market, and just said thank you for, to the village, to the board, for bringing it to the east side of town. So that was nice to hear, I hope you've heard the same comments.
Can I just jump in on this, and you might as well hand it over to Scott? So where are we on the railroad bridge, and when are they going to lay the, got any updates?
Superstructure, so great question. The contractor working out there is, is continuing to make phenomenal progress, in my opinion. They've had great weather the entire summer this year, and the progress has been very solid. So main line pavement, I saw them trimming it this morning, east of the bridge, they're going to get that concrete pour, they'll probably have a pour done potentially this week even for the first few lanes over there. So the abutments have been completed for the new railroad bridge itself, they're working on the tieback walls, and then they'll have to backfill all that, so that's underway. They're working on it daily, they are actually, you know, installing steel and tire bars and things of that nature, so that's underway. At this rate of production, there is a possibility they can have the bearings and the steel coming in probably in the next four to six weeks. At this point, they, and again, this is weather-dependent, but there is a good possibility that they can have the new bridge installed before the end of the year, and traffic switched on to the new bridge. So once the railroad traffic is switched, they still have to remove the old bridge and everything that's in the way, or the temporary bridge, I should say, remove that, and then widen out the rest of Grand Avenue, but it, there's a very good possibility we will have four lanes of traffic out there for winter months, and then in next spring, they can finish up the additional lane widening, and they're, they're really moving fast right now, so fingers crossed.
Yeah, no, it looks like they've been moving.
It's very helpful when there's multiple crews out there, and, you know, dozens of men and women working hard on that job every day, because the traffic complaints have been nil on my end, just people see works happening, and I think they appreciate seeing that, and after so many years of not a whole lot actually looking like it's changing out there.
And some guys stopped, you know how, as you're eastbound, and the light changes, and then the next light, even though he stopped at that stoplight, and I was like, keep going.
There, there's a lot going on. It's obviously, you know, for motorists that may be familiar with the intersection, you're overly, you're overwhelmed very quickly with the visuals that are, are at that location, just between the barriers and the road barrels and signals everywhere, and flaggers and everything else, so.
That's encouraging.
Absolutely. So providing solutions for improved pedestrian and bicyclists. The Village of Gurnee had completed the Blue Ribbon Commission presentation last year. The Village of Gurnee continues to budget in the annual capital plan to install pedestrian facilities. This year, I've kind of got two in the hopper right now. One would be the Washington Street path just east of Hunt Club Road. We've gotten that into the county, we do need a permit from the county for that, so it's still not clear if we're actually going to get permission to do that. So that's actually, that's currently an active project. The other one that we have for permitting that I expect to get approved here any day now is actually on Hunt Club Road, east side, all the way from Washington Street down to Gauges Lake Road, and that would allow us to make a connection there with a pedestrian path. We are looking at University Avenue on the east side of town, just south of the, the Artisan Market location. We found a corridor there that the Blue Ribbon Committee had indicated that can happen as well. And depending on how the permitting goes with the county and the timing and things of that nature, that's something we're going to try and keep in our back pocket at University, because that's something we can do without third-party permitting very quickly. So we're going to see where the, the county stuff comes out. Obviously, the Washington Street location is really my absolute prime location. If I can get that going, I would love to see that happen sooner than later, so. The, the last item on our strategic objective here was really to implement, you know, pedestrian-friendly, you know, the mantra into our comprehensive land use plan. So Camero's has just been brought on board in the last couple of months, and that's basically our last step with that strategic planning item to be completed, is make sure that that is weaved into the fabric of the comp plan, and that is moving forward. So as that plan develops, we should see that being implemented. Improving efforts to mitigate flooding and stormwater management. So since our last update, we've had, you know, the rainy season, and it was kind of hectic there for, for a couple of months, but thankfully, nothing memorable happened this year that put us on the front pages. So we had submitted for multiple properties for the flood mitigation grants through the state and federal level, and unfortunately, we did receive word that we were not awarded or granted any of those funds for the year. So that has passed us by. That wasn't just Village of Gurnee, that was a, you know, consortium matter with Lake County Stormwater Management, and we have found that that money has become barely, it's very competitive in that market now. I think a lot of other communities throughout the country and throughout the state of Illinois have identified like, hey, this is a good deal, it's free money. So we are fighting a lot more people now than we ever have been in the past, I think. So that being said, a new grant program just opened up in the last few months, or last few weeks, actually. They are going to start accepting applications at the end of September, so we will be talking to the neighbors out there that have expressed their previous interest, and we will be communicating with them here in the next week, actually, and try to get, to see if they're still concurrent on applying for that. So again, this would be a situation where the Village of Gurnee would leverage local capital dollars with grant funding to maximize or bank for the buck to acquire additional properties and remove them from the special flood hazard area. So this will be an ongoing thing for the Village of Gurnee for a good, long time into the future. We've made great progress, but there's obviously a lot more to be made. You know, we'd love to see the, the flood headlines of Grand Avenue's been closed, no one was impacted. So that's our, our goal is to get to that point.
Scott, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are there any contiguous properties, of course, I guess you'd call it upstream versus downstream, that we need to put on watch for this overall initiative such as Foxconn? And I know the stuff happening there, but the Wadsworth clearing and something like that?
Those, those, even the Foxconn project, as big as it is, the impact to our community is, in my opinion, on the whole river system, not really large. You know, we experience flooding anytime, you know, Union Grove to here experiences a lot of rain. So our priority has always been focusing on the impacts of the local residents that are affected by the riverine flooding. The Wadsworth, that clearing, that's actually a wetland mitigation that they're going to be creating up there, and historically, we've actually benefited from those types of installations upstream of us. So obviously, from an upstream perspective, we prefer to see more wetland and floodplain spaces, you know, for storage, and we really don't care about downstream. So, you know, in this case, obviously, the Foxconn issue has come up, the county and the Village of Gurnee have both taken a position on that. That's my understanding, a consulting firm has been contracted to study that, to understand what the full impacts are going to be. We've looked at napkin calculations here at the Village of Gurnee, and, you know, there, there will be an adverse impact. The magnitude of it, I don't know, is really that concerning to me at this time, but I'll look for the expensive study to come out of the consultant to verify what's going to actually happen there.
And when does Wadsworth conclude? Because I still saw that there is some groundwork happening.
I actually don't know the entire scope of that project, it is not in the community here. My understanding is, is that, you know, tree clearing is still ongoing, and the last I saw, they were grubbing, which is basically pulling the stumps and the roots out of the ground. Once that's completed, I quite honestly, I expect to see mass grading occurring up along Mill Creek there, where they're actually going to come in there with scrapers and graders and start, you know, pulling out a lot of that material to create a depressed area. Their goal is to create a wetland mitigation bank, at which point, they'll basically create something similar to near the, the Gurnee Truck Stop area up there, where they'll have, you know, wetland credits that they can actually sell for profit to agencies and areas in the community that aren't able to mitigate on-site. So that's the stated goal, it is a, it is going to be a wetland mitigation bank in that area. My understanding is we're talking almost 100 acres created, and that, again, that'll be a phenomenal benefit to the community just to even act as a shock absorber to the riverine flooding that occurs.
Thanks.
And the last item is enhancing the multi-year capital improvement plan. So our strategic goals on this one are to create metrics or key performance indicators for our utility systems and our infrastructure systems and our building facility systems. I am sorry to report that we have not made any progress on this at this time. Once construction season hits, Tom and I both get kind of busy with stuff, so I'm looking forward to snow season when it's really relaxing for some of us. And so I do anticipate, love you. I do anticipate we'll get some progress made on that as, as the construction season slows down now.
Snow, bad letter word. On Public Works side, to develop the Parkway program for Public Works operations, every year, we add money into our traffic control line item, and we're actually currently walking through our system to replace all of our traffic control signs. We are, currently have just finished up Heather Ridge, so we're now moving to the west part of town. The only other things that we have going on are LED streetlight upgrades, which we are in year number four, and on top of that, we are working in collaboration with ComEd, who is replacing all of their streetlights too. So within the next, I would say, four years, we should have our whole village done, including ComEd lights and the lights that we maintain all in LED. So we're averaging about 230 lights changing out every year. The only other one we're working on too is our ash tree treatment program we do every other year. And if you look at that, we are down from 3,300 ash trees to 2,000, and in time, that'll keep dwindling, but then you see that our tree species is changing as well, so we're increasing other tree species within, within town. Other than that, we are kind of moving along. We do tree planting every year in the fall and in the spring, which is working really well. We're replacing obsolete fire hydrants that are continuing, that's a multi-year program as well. And all the other, our hydrant planting program was completed, flow testing was completed for ISO, which is coming up in October. So we're just moving right along, and in coordination with Scott and his capital plan, we kind of work every week, have meetings on that every week, and we kind of work on that to see what's coming up for next year, so.
All right, so this one is me tonight. Chris is on a planned vacation, so I am covering this, so I will try my best. So for, we have a little bit of high, for looking at exploring and enhanced communications via public Wi-Fi or open data. So a couple of the updates that we've had since last time we spoke. So Welton Plaza and Mother Rudd, that area will still be looking at, actually, now that I'm saying, yeah, we're still looking at that area, that's kind of one of the final steps to get that tied into the access. For the high-speed connection between Village Hall and Fire Station 1 was completed. Engineering and Nick Leach worked a lot with the IS division to get that completed. And then currently, the current state is that there is connection of a 10 gigabyte network between, for all village-owned fiber, between Police Station, Village Hall, Fire Station 1, and Public Works. And so now, they have the 10 gigabyte network, and they're working on providing access with the Zion Police Department for the improved connections.
Don't ask. Good job, Ted.
All right, this was the effort to increase our staffing in the visitor-oriented policing team to increase public safety presence in our retail districts. That started with the budgeting increase for two additional police officers, and then that began the recruiting and training and the process of putting those officers in place. This was marked complete in February of 2018 when we met the objective of having three additional officers move into that team. Couple of benefits from that that we've realized, and we, I believe that we really have met all of the, the success indicators that we set out to, they are a proactive policing team, and they're they're able to be a visible presence around the community. I think that the feedback that we got after Gurnee Days was that was very noticeable. We're hearing that from Six Flags and from Gurnee Mills and some of the other enforcement efforts that we've been able to do because of this team in place. One of the other benefits that it provides is it provides a bench for staffing for our patrol teams when something happens to decrease that, that staffing, whether it's a family leave or an extended, any reason why an officer would, would be absent from work for a period of time, a visitor-oriented policing team officer can then be moved into a position where they can reduce shift coverage over time that is a result of that absence. So, that was one of the measures, and we have saved over, almost 700 hours of shift coverage over time because of being able to have that flexibility. So, while this is marked complete, it is one that there is still some room to increase that. We have existing vacancies, and the officers that are, that will be filled through, the two that were mentioned were in the police academy. When those officers graduate, they represent positions that, while it won't be those officers, it'll be experienced officers that will move into that team. This is something that we will continue to increase that benefit as we go forward.
The next one is primarily focused on the update of the comprehensive land use plan. We initially, which is now at 21 years of age, we initially issued a contract with a consultant to initiate the plan in 2016. After hitting a little bit of a lull and not making progress, we chose to separate from that consultant and start a new contract this, late spring this year. Since that time, we've had kickoff meeting and had a few back-and-forths with the consultant and are making good progress. We should be seeing work product coming back to us very shortly. Within the next six months, I expect a, you know, draft plan to be pretty well put together and being placed in front of the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and comment. And then hopefully, after the first of the year, next spring, we should have the final product before you as, for final adoption.
Researching opportunities for shared communications dispatch services. Well, a lot has happened since this was initially set out as a, a part of the strategic plan. In a lot of ways, this is completed. We have experienced success in grants and in remodeling our dispatch center. And in July of last year, we brought the consolidated center together, we brought Zion in as a partner. So, in a sense, that part of it is completed, but in another sense, this probably will never be completely checked off as completed. We have transitioned into participation with the Lake County Consolidated Effort. So, that is 21 communities that have joined together to look at the larger picture of further consolidation around the county. So, Patrick and Chris Velkover and John and I are on that, on that panel and are involved and have begun to participate in the committees with that, with that group moving forward. They are at the stage now where they are selecting a project manager, so the, it's still in the beginning stages of, of, of the direction that's gonna be sought, again, as a more regional county effort for further consolidation. We represent both the village and the formed joint ETSB, so we hold a number of different positions, but there are 21 communities and consolidated dispatch centers that are represented in this group. So, I'm not sure that this will ever really be fully checked off as completed.
I have a question.
Yes?
When you're saying regional, are you saying that their plan is to put all of them together in one place?
Well, that's a long conversation, but there is an ambitious plan to really significantly consolidate the communication centers. I don't know whether that vision will ever fully be realized. There are lots of partners involved in the conversation, not everybody shares that same vision, so.
That would be, that would make ours obsolete then, right? Because we couldn't have that many in one place?
Well, there are different visions for consolidated centers. I mean, we are one of them now. You know, there is a, there's a fully consolidated model, which is one or two centers, which is an ambitious vision that requires-
For the whole county?
Capital building campaign and a long-term vision. Then there's a less fully consolidated model that has nine or so centers, and currently, we're looked at as one of those. So, it's really unclear what the long-term vision is here, and our goal is to be a part of having a voice in that, to see where that develops. I would welcome any help from Mr. Mutes or Chief Kavanaugh, if you have anything you wanna add to that.
What is the feedback from Zion, like, from their police and from their, as far as the consolidation?
As far as how successful it's been from their perspective? Well, I would hesitate to speak for them, and there have been some growing pains, but I think that we have made significant strides, and really, things are working very well. And the level of service that they're enjoying is, is probably better than it has been, and we're looking to continue to improve that. But it was a significant change bringing them in, it's been just over a year, and we're still working on getting staffing up to the level of getting everybody fully trained to be able to do all the things that we wanna do. But we are on the right trajectory, and the feedback is, has been very good.
Along those lines, in spite of the Lake County, do, are we actively looking for another community to buy into our system, or is that jumping the gun, or?
I would characterize that as we are open to it. I don't know that we're actively seeking any, but if there's a partnership that makes sense, we're certainly very interested in having that conversation. There is a necessity, in a regional sense, to continue to consolidate, and we wanna be an active part of that. And that's really why we're involved in the county-level effort, and one of the things that we're looking to do locally as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
This is, I was, I was told to describe this as a strategic pause. We are still in the process of implementing this, and it is a situation that's beyond our control. It is the Circuit Court Clerk's Office is working out the system where, by which the records can be transmitted from our records department to the clerk's office. So, the communities that have taken the step to implement the technology are able to, to send citations from their squad cars internally, then into their record sections, but not beyond that. So, we are taking the opportunity to watch the other communities and the vendors that they're choosing, and, and take a look at their successes and challenges, and then wait for the clerk's office to, to, to be positioned so that we can fully implement this. So, so that is why this has not yet been completed. And finally, body-worn cameras. This is one that we completed early last year. The cameras are fully implemented, we have 60 of them in the field, every uniformed officer and all of our detectives are wearing them. We have really had no glitches along the way. The online storage of evidence has worked seamlessly, the equipment is working well. I should knock on wood as I say this, but it's one of those things that is really, really working well. And one of the goals in setting out in this program was to, to mitigate liability. And as you know, we had an officer-involved shooting in May, and one of the first things that staff did as a group was watched about 30 hours of body camera video from all of the different officers that were involved. And while that was a time-consuming process, it gave us a very clear picture of what took place. And what took two months for the major crime task force and then the State's Attorney's Office to conclude is that the officers acted reasonably and appropriately and were to be commended for their professionalism. We knew that as quickly as we were able to watch that video, so. And now, we have a permanent record of exactly what took place for whatever challenges come in the future, and it was just a really good model for what we can expect from this. And I couldn't be more pleased with, with the, with the performance of those cameras and being able to secure that perspective for us. So, if you were looking at this as an insurance policy, I think it's already paid off, so very successful.
That's great.
Improving public transportation opportunities. This one, we are currently working on getting bicycle racks installed at some of our pace shelters. So, engineering staff's been directed in their daily travels throughout the community to identify locations where we've seen bicycles tied up to trees or, you know, bricks or just left on the side of the road near the bus stops. So, we are monitoring that, we're actually not finding a lot of usage in that way right now. So, I had expected with school starting, that might have changed, it did not. And so, if anybody sees any opportunities out there where we can get some bicycle racks installed at the pace stops, please feel free to let me know, because I'm looking for options at this point. Historically, I think I've seen them all over the community, and all of a sudden, they're not there when I actually have the, you know, the drive to go do something about it. So, that's our next operation that we're doing on that, and I think Ellen continues to communicate well with our pace partner, provide transportation opportunities. So, we're doing our best to work with the organization. As Ellen mentioned earlier, we put in the concrete pads and magically, a shelter appears. So, they're being highly used, and we're, it's very exciting for me just to see something that, you know, I just put in on a whim, like, hey, I'll put a pad here, because maybe they'll do it. And then, you know, there's three or four people standing there every morning on my drive-in, so it warms me up a little bit to see that happening.
And that's hard to do.
It is.
Historically, back in, when they were first talked about, there was major issues about graffiti and cleanliness. Has that ever been a serious issue or anything?
The graffiti, it's a rare occasion, and it does, something does occur. The cleanliness, this is kind of a double-edged sword. My favorite one this last week was in front of the Menards location, where the garbage can is overflowing, and like, every week, it's overflowing. And it's really actually a testament to tell you how many people are actually using the garbage can, and unfortunately, we just gotta do more servicing on that. So, there, there is maintenance required with these shelters as they go in, but obviously, the community's using them too. So, it's kind of a double-edged sword there, that they're using them, and we need to maybe improve the quality of service, especially on the garbage pickup side of things. So, Patrick's been helping out with that.
Yeah, Ellen and I, I mean, as recent as today, have been emailing back and forth with our pace representative as far as the shelter at Menards and Six Flags, and that they need to be on a more regular schedule to get out there to clean it up. So, that's something that we fought, I think, since I started here, is keeping them on top of those shelters. So, I know we're working with them on that, and we've got another meeting set up for October we're shooting for, just to talk about things in general. But obviously, if it's not addressed by then, it'll be something that'll be at the top of the list. So, luckily, when they drop the ball on it, unfortunately, Public Works comes to the rescue and assists, but we try not to have Public Works do that, because it's not fun work, and it's not their responsibility, so.
Don't, but people that ride bikes usually take their bike on the bus?
That's, that is true now. So, that's one of the evolutionary things between, you know, Metro and the pace, they are allowing bicycles on those facilities now. So, I don't know how much of that's having an impact on what we're looking for at this time, but, you know, and it's, it's, that could be, that could be the reason I'm not seeing bicycles out there anymore. I don't know.
I see them putting them on the-
Yeah, yeah, they, they load them on the front of the buses now. So, again, if anybody sees any opportunities out there for us, please do not hesitate to forward that on to Ellen and myself, and say, we'll, we'll pull the trigger on it, make it happen.
Just to follow up on the pace shelter issue, did I, did I fail to mention earlier that the next location is Hunt Club, west of Hunt Club, west of the Sam's Club entrance? That is on their list. I don't know that we have a timetable yet for that, but, but the count, but pace has told us that's our next location for new shelter. And that would, that would presumably be an ad shelter, so the difference between ad shelters and not, you know, obviously, you see the ads on the side. When they're ad shelters, we like to hope that pace will do a better, there'll be more maintenance, because there's revenue coming in to offset their cost of maintenance. On county roads, ad shelters aren't allowed, and those then fall to, to us to maintain. So, where possible, we've been allowing the ad shelters, so that that maintenance load comes off of our, off of our crews. So, this last, at least last for me, maybe not last in the rotation, but if all of our economic development initiatives, as they are, are viewed through a lens of either jobs, revenue, or quality of life, it's gotta take at least one, at least one of those boxes, hopefully more, this one probably falls into the latter category, quality of life. So, while I think our residents understand, and certainly, we all do, that the large, significant retail, national retail and restaurants on the west side of town fund our, our operations, that doesn't change the fact that they still like to have alternatives to those large chain restaurants. We hear a lot, we hear a lot about that. One of the ways that we've reacted to that is to start to promote the smaller businesses on Gurnee's Got It. We did produce an independent restaurant guide, which we update annually for the Chamber Community Guide. It actually, we do print it every 18 month, it's due for a reprinting. So, we distribute that in the hotels, try, we have 34, I think, at last count, independent restaurants. And that seems to be one area where we've been pretty successful in giving them a little bit of a boost. I think as we, so some, so some of these things are routinized at this point, a resident could go on our website, I don't, I think most people use Google, if you wanna know the truth, but we do have the functionality on our website to be able to search by category or by geography, all, all of our businesses in town, and print that out if they want to use it as a guide. Something that just fortunately has been, the technology behind it, you know, it gets, it gets updated real time, so as a new license is added, that business is added to the website. So, it's not a lot of staff time at this point to maintain. If it were, we'd have to seriously, I think, reconsider that. As we go forward though, I think some of these, there's still some, there's some things on this list that I would like to be able to check done, that I think we've been talking about for a while, and it's time to stop talking and start doing. And so, a couple of those are the update of the Small Business Handbook. So, our small, part of the reason we do these activities, these initiatives, is because these small businesses don't have a lot of corporate support behind them. So, when they're doing something, it may be the only time they do it, whether that's a project with David's team or a promotion of some sort, they don't have a huge corporate, you know, vehicle behind them. So, the Small Business Handbook at least enables them to understand how to navigate our resources. It's fairly up to date, because things have been pretty predictable, but I think we have a few tweaks, and it just needs to get done. So, that's a fall/winter project while, you know, while Public Works is out taking care of snow, those of us without, we'll, we'll be doing some cleaning projects.
You're just lucky the mayor's not here to jump on this.
So, that'll be a fall/winter initiative. I also have, will probably be back to you, assuming that I can get this through Patrick's review, for a marketing consultant that will really enable, take some, take some load off staff. Just, just in the same way that small businesses are in need of a little bit of more high-touch help from staff, that high-touch help takes time away from other things. So, I think some of the, some of the things that I like to do for the small business community could be done by a third party. So, I think one of the things we should look at over the winter will be to figure out what kinds of activities we can do. Maybe, maybe it's the Gurnee's Got It Facebook page, some, some maintenance there, updating of economic development materials. Things, the, the one thing that I think has been a priority for Jack and I, we've talked about it, and I think the mayor has it on her mind as well, is an annual marketing calendar, a plan, that says, this is what we're gonna promote in January, February, March, you know. And so, from my perspective, that would be different types of sectors of businesses are getting promoted at different times of year. It may be events, it may be beer, would be Beer Fest at this time of year, farmer's market, you name it. What are we going to be focusing our social media resources on, and how can we best do that to not only help our own activities, but then support our small business community? So, that's something you'll be hearing a little bit more about, and hopefully, we can move from kind of the, you know, partially done to fully done on that one, within about three to four months.
Does anyone else have another slide?
We got two more to go. So, I got the easy one, Welton Plaza. Everyone was there at the dedication ceremony at the end of June. I mean, it turned out beautiful. You know, we took our time to get it done, but I think we got it done right. I think it's a proper dedication to Mayor Welton, and thanks to Scott and Cheryl, obviously, you know, getting the plan together and getting it executed, and then Public Works has done, you know, phenomenal job, keeping it looking, looking nice. So, it was a challenging summer with how hot it was, but, I mean, all the flowers and vegetation, everything out there looks beautiful, so that one has been marked complete.
All right. So, we gotta finish it on another strong note, because here's another one I'm covering. So, this one is interesting. With this one, this one is kind of, it's, it's a little held up, and a lot of that is because it's a private sector activity that we help encourage. And when we dreamed this back in 2015, one of the goals we had said was a 1 gigabyte connection for residents and businesses at the end of this plan. Well, that's already been done by the private sector, and they actually now offer up to 15 gigs of custom data networks for large commercial sector and private users. So, it's continuing to grow. The other thing that I think's grown probably beyond what we had anticipated at the time was the growth- the time was the growth of wireless technology taking place of traditional internet connection. So, people now can stream, they can watch things from mobile networks. So, one of the things the private sector's done is they're really upping their small cell technology. So, the small cell, small networks is continuing to grow, and it's continuing to grow in our community as a viable public resource. So, we're seeing growth in it, and we'll continue to watch it grow from the private sector.
Yeah. So, that wraps up the report for tonight. As I said, we'll update it again with the budget process. We'll have an updated report in March when the budget book comes out. As you heard, marked a couple of them checked off between now and then. So, I'll continue to whittle away at them. And then, at some point, a couple of years down the line, we'll need to talk about updating this document and go through that process again. So, we'll be near the end and hopefully have the majority of them completed and be ready to work on a, a new list of goals and initiatives for the following four or five years. So, that is all we had.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you all for your concerted efforts to work on all of these and to have accomplished as much as you have. We are all very appreciative of your efforts.
Yeah. I think it is lost in the day-to-day, as far as how much we do get done and the departments get done. And they did a good job adhering to this and staying on top of it. So, I think these reports are good to remind everybody as far as how much progress has been made, because as I said, that can get lost in the shuffle. So, kudos to them.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody, anything else?
I'm the second.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Do we have something? So, adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to, and you're second. Tom and Cheryl seconded, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here. Thank you all.